You've got the agenda in front of you as Luann already, thank you, Luann already mentioned. We're going to, item nine, the closed session for a conduct administration review is going to be brought back to next week, a week from tonight instead. We've got a bunch of things on the work session that get laid enough as it is probably. Okay, with that change, is there a motion to approve the agenda with that change?
Make that motion.
Is there a second?
No, second.
A motion made and second to approve the agenda with the change of the administrative review. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, is anyone who wishes to address the council? Hearing none or seeing no one, we'll move on. We have the consent agenda, 4.1 approval of minutes for the November 9th, 2015 regular council meeting, 4.2 approval of minutes for the October 13th park board meeting, 4.3 approval additional claims for the month of November, and 4.4 approval of the sheriff's department report for a month in October 15. Any of those items need to be pulled out for further discussion? I guess I do have a question, and since Andrew's here, I ask you. The, I noticed in the claim, is it, am I correct that it was some $4,500 for that study, for the Spadesville study? Have we, have we known that ahead of time, that the amount?
I think Dave told us that a witness fee wasn't at $4,500.
Okay.
Didn't he give us one not to exceed?
I don't recall, this is what I was asking.
I can check on that, Jerry.
If you would check on that, I guess that cabinet catch that, okay. So if you'll check on that and get back to us, that'd be fine.
Okay.
Any other questions about the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
We'll move.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Motion made second to approve the consent agenda as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Staff reports, Public Works, Ben, Kyle.
Mr. Mayor, council members, you have Public Works report in your packet, and Kyle is also present, I'm sure that he'd be happy to answer any of the questions you may have.
So are you putting up the salt thing? Is it up now?
They're coming next week.
So you're gonna pray it doesn't snow between?
Yeah. I remember it.
While they're talking, we could have a wintry mix up there today.
There's no salt in it, is there, right now, Luann?
No, I got it in the Krieger yet. We have to kick it out.
Oh, so you have salt?
I have it on hand, yeah.
Okay.
That's a positive.
That's always helpful. Any questions for Kyle, any other questions for Kyle? Okay, moving on then, City Engineer.
Mr. Mayor, council members, you have Dave Martini's report in your packet, I'm sure that Andrew would be happy to answer any questions on his report, or I can, I will find out about the speed study for you.
That Wedland Restoration Project, now, if they did not get it burned off this fall, it's, we and Jeffrey, they're losing their money and stuff, what's gonna happen?
No, I don't believe we're in jeopardy of losing the money. We just finally got approval from, from them this last week. Contractor, no, I talked to him here, actually, I was standing on the meeting, talking to him, and because of the last rain events that we had, the basin was pretty full, it is draining down, but because it's been freezing every night, the frost has started to set in the ground too, so that makes it a little precarious for him to try and do the segment in the park, where that connects to the park on the north side of the Dakota Rail Trail. So he feels that he'll be able to get in there and do some of the work yet this fall, but he doesn't think he'll be able to finish it unless he gets a very, very favorable, like December, where it stays about 40 degrees and kind of, because of what the frost is making deeper. He wants to do it, but I think him and I are both on the same page that we both want to do it, but we don't want to add extra costs just to force it to happen, and so we're both being very cognizant of that, and kind of waiting to see what the weather happens, the weather does, and otherwise we'll be prepared to wrap it up for this period.
Okay.
I will contact the county about the winter funds, to be sure, but I had already submitted an invoice to them for some engineering fees, so he was waiting for some of the construction to begin, but if I can let him, I'll have a conversation this fall tomorrow and update you on the whole.
Okay.
The $50,000 that we are getting from the county.
Okay, any other questions for Andrew? Okay, then moving on to Sheriff's Department report you have in front of you, and there's no one here to answer questions about that, so going to 5.4, City Administrator Report.
Mr. Mayor, council members, you have my report in your packet, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about any of my activities over the past month.
On the comprehensive plan grant, you've been in touch with someone on the Met Council as far as wanting a grant, or wasn't needing money to, did that get that done, right?
Correct, the grants won't be available till January, if you read, there was an email that I attached also. Also, John Anderson is coming back with a revised comprehensive plan, because he thinks that he could do it with, for much less work, because there'll just be some updating to some of the chapters, so he's gonna get, present that to the Planning Commission on the first of December, and probably come back to you then on December 14th for your review. So it won't be a full comprehensive review, like he first of all gave us in that proposal that we had, but there's also, we'll be planning grants up to $7,500 available from Carver County, too.
Okay, yeah, reason I asked it, because at the regional meeting this last week I was at, or week ago rather, there was one thing they talked about, they said that they want, they were supposed to be sure in contact in that council, they wanted grants, so they knew, because they were in the process of actually deciding whether to add more money to the program or not, to fund it at a higher level, so as long as we are in contact, so they know that we want that, and the, yeah, the, sounds like they're going to be doing a little more stuff online, submitting the whole thing online, rather than as via PDF, rather than anything written, so there should be some cost savings there, too.
So according to the email, the sewer communities were initially projected to receive $25,000. These amounts are subject to changes, I mentioned, I'll send out emails when we have more definite, definitive information. If we don't have to do a full review, I don't know, ours was 20-some thousand the last time when we did the, and that was from a whole new.
Right.
So I would think that we would be, we'll be fine with the planning grant, that we won't exceed that amount, because we did not budget anything for it, if we don't, then we'll have to think about budgeting or working on the comprehensive plan then in 2018, but I think these grants usually come through.
Yeah, this sounds as though they are to try to streamline a little bit, and get everything submitted online and so forth, to save some cost that way, too. Okay, anything else for Luann? Okay, then, we need to open a public hearing, or what do we need to do here?
Yes, open a public hearing.
Okay, then we'll open a public hearing for the Delinked Utilities.
And then ask for public comments, you know.
Any wishes to address the council regarding the hearing none?
We can call a public hearing.
How much money is still in there?
$4,478.
Does that affect the water rates then?
No, this is the amount of money that people, are, people, everyone were sent notices, that if they didn't pay their water bill by today at noon, then it gets put on their property taxes, and then it comes, it gets assessed, and then they have to pay it as part of their property tax bill next year, so.
Do we know, is there people living in all these homes, or are they bank reclosures, or?
2346 Coldwater Crossing is a foreclosure. 102 Hedy Creek Boulevard, there's a life event going on there that created a problem. The rest of them are pretty small, I mean, I think we had over $9,000 worth of, and people came in and killed these, so, but this is the highest it's been in a long time.
Okay, then, the other comments will close the public hearing, and move on to 6.1 approval of resolution for the assessment of the Delinked Utility Bills.
And this will be considered Exhibit A, this is Exhibit A.
This is Exhibit A, okay.
It's referenced in the resolution, as far as.
Yep. Okay, so you've got the resolution in front of you, is there a motion to approve this resolution assessing these unpaid utility bills to the taxes?
Who'll make that motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion made second to approve resolution 11-23-2015-40 for the assessment of the Delinked Utility Bills, any further discussion or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, 6.2.
Mr. Mayor, council members, as you're all aware, the Roundabout project is completed, and final costs have been reviewed by the city council at the previous meeting. Mayor Luthen High's portion of the cost of the roundabout is $402,768. Based on the cost of bond and the assessment to the Luthen High, will be for 10 years at a 3% interest rate. The attached resolution explains the assessment and the agreement between the school and the city, and the requests for approval of the resolution adopting the assessment for the roundabout.
If you have any questions, anyone would have.
Anybody have any questions for Luann on this? Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made second to approve resolution 11-23-2015-41 for the assessment, T L H S, for the roundabout, any further questions or discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, 6.3, approval of conversion of sick time to PTO.
Mr. Mayor, council members, city council approved a personnel policy that now has PTO instead of sick time and vacation time. Staff's current sick time should be converted to PTO, and the following is a sick time payout from the previous personnel policies, you can see. Staff is proposing that the following amounts of PTO be credited to the employees, the amount that pays some of the payout again for the sick time, if an employee was resigning or retiring. Since Public Works has been here less than the five years, council may want to consider a one-time transfer, or to use the lowest percentage amount, below, using the lowest percentage amount, Public Works would have 55.05 hours of PTO for accumulated sick time. I know there was discussion about transferring more of the sick time straight to PTO, council could transfer for an hour-for-hour amount, then the rest as a percentage, council will need to discuss the amount of credit for sick time, and also a date for the implementation should be decided.
Anybody have any questions, or wish to discuss this, or speak to it? So you're, you're proposing, or staff is proposing, the figures we see in front of us here.
Right, so the, where it says current sick time, and then the percentage of conversion for the city clerk, city administrator, and then I think that Public Works also should be given 30% of their sick time, it shouldn't just be thrown out the door. So I would propose that we all just convert our sick time according to the previous personnel policy, and then I would like to get when you want me to start, when you want that to start, whether you want to have the auditors review it at the end of 2015, or if you just want me to do it and they can still review it now, I would have them review it to be assured that it was done correctly.
So do you guys have, you had sick time and vacation?
Mm-hmm.
Now, when you convert, are you losing vacation hours with this conversion rate?
Well, this is only our sick time, so in my sick bank, I have 500 vacation hours.
Okay.
So if I were to resign or leave today, and I would get 40% of that time paid out.
Right.
So what I'm proposing is to take whatever our current balance is, use the conversion that was from the previous policy, and then give us that PTO at $111.22.
And then still have the vacation, and then the vacation hours would be in there? Because technically, that number would be the same, go, whenever this was it, PTO would be vacation, sick time.
Right.
Anything.
So we no longer would accrue this, we're no longer gonna accrue sick time, we're only gonna accrue PTO, so this would get added to our vacation hours.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, I didn't want you to.
The current vacation hours, and then the whole thing will just be, the whole heading will become paid time off, instead of vacation and sick, we'll just make a whole new heading with PTO.
So if you called in sick, it came off as sick hours, but if you took the day of the vacation, it came off as vacation hours?
Right.
And now, just every, no matter what, did you take the day off, so it doesn't matter why this thing's off?
Correct.
But you have this, and you'll start accruing whatever we need.
Whatever the accrual was that was approved in the last time at the personal policy.
But right now, your, every employee has a different vacation, like, you might get three weeks, you might get one week, is that how you do it now?
It's based on hours, I don't even know.
Oh, it's based on hours?
6.66 hours, or whatever it is, I don't even know.
Oh, so it's, accrues just like PTO with your vacation hours.
Correct, correct, it's done per paper, so it's broken up, but even though you guys said it's two, three days, we'll have to go back and figure out what those amount of hours are, so that it's accrued.
Because you'll obviously have to pay for a vacation.
No, vacation will just go hour for hour.
It'll just keep.
Because if, if, if you, if I resigned or retired today, whatever, I would get paid out all of my, my vacation time, straight, but my sick time is converted to the tax process. So what, what we'll do is I'll take, if you agree to this conversion, then those hours will get added to the vacation time, and then the heading will change to PTO, and then the way, and then sick time accrual will just go away, and then we'll figure out what the implementation is for the PTO, and then that'll add to whatever, the sick time and vacation time balances are, the beginning of PTO.
I just wanna make sure we're losing time.
So if we, if.
A little, yeah.
Yeah.
But, kind of, but they can't use sick time unless they're really sick, so are they really losing it? So if we use this conversion.
Being one that's been really sick as of late, you know, having a big, I, I don't like this with the PTO time, but.
If we use this conversion, and add your vacation, is anybody in danger of going over that cap? You know how, or does the cap not apply till the end of the year?
Probably the cap doesn't apply till the end of the year.
And then you have to.
Well, it's, it wasn't, it's the second, we could say that it doesn't apply till the end of the year, and give it all time, and you can take the.
To use, to use it down a little bit.
But, you know, just remember, part of the problem is, I don't really have anybody to call in totally covered for sick time, or vacation time always for me, either.
Well, I'm not thinking the other than 2015, because you'd have to.
I know, but in 2016, you can change.
Right, well, we, I hope we hire someone by then.
Yeah, we're supposed to be hiring somebody.
Okay. You sound like you don't believe that. That's my only concern, what, because some of these are.
I guess that if that comes to that point, then you have to pay it out, or maybe you let us, you let us carry it over, we can come and ask for, because I did ask for that in my, in my contract, I wasn't always able to, you allowed me to carry over more of my time, my comp time, because I couldn't always get it out, you allowed me that difference in that contract, so.
Are you allowed to cash out at the end of the year?
That's what the personnel policy does, yes. So just like, this is a liability, in the audit now, if you go look at the audit.
Where does this come from? I can't remember, I know it's been doing stuff like.
Where did what come?
When, who, was it, the council thought we should move to PTO time, or is it something that the cities are doing?
I think there were council members that wanted to do it.
Cities do it, too, don't they?
Some do, some have the other way, too, it's just, it's just crap.
I think the discussion about going to PTO is simply because that's the employee's choice how to use it, and you don't make liars on employees, when they take a sick day when they are actually on a personal day, which I know is, does happen.
Well, I have, I have.
Absolutely, I think PTO is, but I don't like earned time just being taken away.
Well, that we could change, we could change, if you want to change the percentage, you up the percentage a little bit, we could certainly do that. I mean, they, this was in our old policy, right?
So we're not losing anything there.
No, because you're, you're allowed up to so much, and if you didn't, if you didn't use it, and you weren't sick, you lost all of it, so.
After 960 hours, but I mean, we're, we're converting what we would get if we can, but we're really not losing it, I mean, you're, you're actually giving us more time to be able to use, as long as it doesn't have any vacation time, this will give her the ability to be able to have vacation time now.
Yeah, I would agree. So I would make a motion to accept this policy as written, and then add Kyle's in also at 30%.
Okay.
Okay, so, not a motion, a second to approve this conversion as printed here, any further discussion or questions? There's nothing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Date to start.
Okay, then we need a date to start it, okay, we forgot to include that, so.
So the fifth of December is the start of the next pay period, do you want to start it?
When did the policy, is the policy in effect?
The policy's in effect, so do you want me to do it for this pay period, because we.
To the accountant?
He can look at, I can do it, but I would just have to, we'll get him to review it, we'll get him to review it, too, to make it more accurate.
And then we'd have to give you an extension for after the end of the year, because next month, then you're not gonna use all your.
Well, so why don't you say that the, the balance carryovers don't start till the end of 2016? Make your motion, make your motion to do when you want it to start, and then any balances that are carryover.
Carryover through 2016.
We're carrying everything over through 2016, but by December 31st, 2016, people should be in compliance with the policy.
Yeah, 2016, okay, right.
Huh?
Can we just make a motion to, to start this, January 1st, 2016, in the, this can be carried over through 2016?
Yeah, we could do that, too, I guess, so.
And then you'll just adjust the hours, right? Because this is gonna change.
Yeah, and it'll never time to get all.
Another eight hours.
Once it's started.
Yep, doesn't matter, well, December 31st is the, is the first day of the, of the pay period for 2016.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, that's, you want to do it, start it for the first pay period in 2016, you don't have to worry about the balance carryover and stuff?
Right, okay, so then a motion would be in order to make this effective for the first pay period in 2016, and that the carryover would be through 2016.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, we'd have to be compliant. Well, the policy's in effect right now, though.
Compliance, compliance by the end of 2016.
Right, the policy's in effect right now, right, so.
For the, from now until the end of the month, what is the plan for sick leave?
Well, we each get eight hours again, and then it'll get converted.
No, I mean, what if you have a sick day now? The policy's in effect, so that just, would just get taken off of there?
Would just be taken off.
Yeah, just taken off.
I got it, all right. If it works, it works.
We can make it work.
Okay, so, the motion we're looking for is to make it effective the first pay period in 2016, and that everyone needs to be in client, compliance with the personnel policy by the end of 2016, is that right? Is there, is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion made second to begin this conversion effective the pay, first period period in 2016, and everyone will need to be in compliance by the end of 2016. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, 6.4.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Park Board is recommending that the city offer movies to the residents in the community center here, on Saturday, December 12th, 2015, and Wednesday, December 23rd, 2015. They're planning on showing Polar Express on Saturday, the 12th, at 7:00, and on Wednesday, December 23rd, the movie would be The Grinch, and the time of showing would be from 1:00 to 3:00. Staff will advertise the movie on the electronic sign, Facebook, and in the newspaper, the request is for approval of the expense of $330 for the two movies at $165 each to be licensed, so a motion approving the expense of $330 would be in order.
My only thing is, Watertown still has school on the 23rd, they have an early release day, and their release day is 1:00 P.M. I think it should be between 5:00 and 7:00. So, yeah. Yeah, keep, school goes to the 23rd, the, the first day off is the 24th. So I just think it's weird to have a movie for.
They thought that they, they thought school would be out by then?
Yeah.
I don't know why we thought that, thought we looked at that.
Nate texted me that night, asked me, and then I wrote the 24th, Gavin is that whole week, but Caitlin was starting the 24th, so, but I didn't text that right away back, so that's probably.
Well, the, if you want to approve the expense and request the Park Board reevaluate the date, they do meet on the 8th of December, unless you want to make a recommendation on the date.
I would say leave up to the Park Board to establish the date.
That if you want to approve the expense.
They approve the expenditure, because that won't, that won't change with the, with the date change.
Right.
And there's still enough time from the, you can still advertise the 12th.
We'll still do the 12th, yeah, and then we'll just change the other one, or, if we don't do it, we don't do it. I don't know why we decided to do it before, there was a discussion about it, I can't really remember, originally, we were going to do it in between, during the vacation, and then, I don't know, some of it was no available dates, I guess, was some of that discussion, and, I can't remember what else, the reason why they decided to go.
So if you guys decide to only do one date, then we were only really approving the 165?
Correct, so if you do that, and that took, see, of 330, if, if they decide to do two, if they decide to do one, it's on 165.
Was there a discount with the two? It seems lower than what I.
It's not the, it's not outside, it's inside, that's the difference. The outside was 300 and something, and inside, it's only 165.
With the email? Weird.
Really?
Oh, I didn't.
That's what she said, in the email.
I would think, well.
Oh, yeah, I started reading it.
Indoor, people indoors.
Okay, all of our movies will be indoors from here on out, that is a big difference. That's good.
Then you have a worry about rain.
About half of what we thought it was gonna cost.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve this expenditure, let's see, up to $330 max, for two showings, or $165 for one showing?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion made second to approve this expenditure for up to two movies at $165 each, basically, is what it amounts to. Any further discussion or questions?
So we pay this fee for 165, can we show that movie one time?
One.
So we can't use it year after year?
No.
It's a one-time, do you?
It's a one-time fee.
And it is money that is left over in the budget?
Any further, any other questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, council reports, anyone have anything to report, I've got some, if you guys have anything, first of all.
I went to the, went to the county Excel meeting, I don't know if there's anything really to earth-shattering on that.
And that's where they're gonna change that business loan program to those planning grants, so, talked about that a little bit, set the dates for next year.
Anybody else? Okay, I was, I went to the regional meeting, and there was kind of three basic discussions, one was the first, most important was city hall safety presentation, kind of an eye-opening discussion, and probably something we probably need to follow up on at some point, too, about just general safety, and they were talking about active shooter situations, all this kind of stuff like this, and I guess even Winston did have an active shooter demonstrant tabletop and drill on it, not too long ago, so it may well, to get, get some information from them, or Rod could contact them. It was rather eye-opening, and it's not just limited to big cities, it's, it was amazing the number of small towns that have had issues, come up with this, it was also amazing the number of cities that have installed these panels down here, bulletproof panels. It was also amazing the number of cities that have installed these panels down here, bulletproof panels, and have installed bulletproof sheet rock out there in a hallway, bulletproof glass for a lower sit, and this kind of stuff. And it's not just big cities, it's small cities, so we live in a different world, so. So it's something we probably need to address or talk about a little more sometime, even an exit out of this room is, um, right now, we're kind of sitting ducks here, so, the way it is.
I mean, I would like to get, what, what would we do in that scenario, like a conversation, like at a work session where we talk through, like, you know, because I wouldn't know what to do.
Uh, actually, the two presenters would come out and talk to us.
Yeah, I, I would feel that would be something beneficial for everyone here.
Yeah, they do work with the league, they're on, they're on the league staff, and league Minnesota city staff.
Does it cost money for them to come out with it?
I would think it's fairly nominal of anything, because we pay our dues to the League of Minnesota Cities. One of them was actually a, I'm not sure if he's still, he worked for the city of Victoria for a while as, I think, a public works city, say, and he's also was a Victoria firefighter. I'm not sure if he still is or not, if he.
Probably lost, probably.
That's, okay, that's, that's, that's right. So I guess, if that's something you'd like to have a discussion sometime at a work session, I think it'd be worth it.
Yeah. Can we do, like, Schindler the Leader?
Yes, we can.
I don't know, I mean, I just, I mean, I've gone to safe self-defense classes, and it's very eye-opening, because since I work downtown and I'm in a parking ramp, you know, like, just things to be aware of, and I had a scary thing, and I even called保安. You know, like, with a guy yelling at me, and it was just scary to be, like, what do you do in those scenarios?
And I believe if you, if you look up on YouTube, look up, uh, video run, hide, fight, that will give you, that's a training video they actually use to, for cities. It's run, run, hide, fight. I think if you look that up, you'll probably find it. You can say, he says it's on, it's on YouTube, and, uh.
Fight to get to the door.
I, I, no, and I agree with you, Nikki, it's up, we, we do need that discussion, and I think Eric knows, too, who I'm talking about, as far as things that, that can happen. So if you want, I, um, one and I could talk, contact the legal ones to see if, if either one or both of those gentlemen could come out and talk to us and go through some of the information that we need to be aware of.
It'd be good to, um, go through the information, and I think, I'm not sure, but they might be able to do some kind of an audit to the facility.
Yep.
And make recommendations on what you should do.
I did get a bunch of stuff, and, uh, let me go through it to make sure that I, there's some stuff I got even to evaluate, a checklist of things we need to look at, you know. So, uh, let me go through and, and, and I, I don't have it, uh, they did email some of the information up, but I think it'd be still better to have them come out and talk to us. In person, to do that, so let's, uh, Luann, I, we'll, you and I can contact the legal on that. Uh, they also went through the planning thing, and like I said before, a comp plan update, uh, the online stability thing, trying to streamline things a little bit, and, um, there's some interesting questions about that. And some things as far as the affordable housing thing, how they classify that, but it's just, again, one of the things that Met Council wants us to do. Mendat is an interesting discussion, and I did not, did not gain any points with Mendat that day, because I let him know I wasn't too happy with taking two and a half months to approve a silly pedestrian crossing sign. I thought that was ridiculous, and I also told him it was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in engineering fees for the Roundabout was exorbitant. Either one of the things they, they wished they liked to hear, so, so be it. Uh, anything else from the council, otherwise?
We talked about it at the work session, but you were going to set up a meeting with Met Council?
Yeah, I'm, uh, after this regional meeting, I, I'll contact her and get, get out here. So I want to go, I want to go to the meeting first of all, to see, get some input there, first of all. So, yes, I, I've got that on my, uh, list of things to do. Okay, um, anything else that needs to come before the council? Okay, okay, then if not, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion made second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. I guess we don't want it there.